There's a select board meeting being held in Donnelly Russell Meeting Room. Please rise for the legislative agents. Legislative agents.
To the fight of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, please call the roll, please.
Roland Tuff. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Marie Brilliant.
Here.
Anne Callahan.
Here.
Ryan Holmes.
I am present.
Matt Nixon.
Hello.
And I town manager Mark Walz is also at the head table. All present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, for taking minutes.
You're welcome.
Town manager report.
Good evening, everyone. The state has released drafts of the interpretive panels to be included as part of the new Tops and Brunswick Bridge. They look good. The state is taking public comment through March 31st on the panels. There's a link to the public notices on the public notice section of the front page of our website if you'd like to see the panels and/or make suggestions to MDOT to modify them. MDOT is also having what they call an on-demand virtual public meeting, meaning that you can watch the recorded info at any time and then submit comment to share the details of the proposed Route 196 bypass widening. A link to the materials is also in the public notices section of our website. And then finally, I'd like to give congratulations to Goodwill that had the grand reopening this morning of their Tops and store. They've signed a new lease for 10 years and renovated the store. For those of you that haven't been there, Goodwill takes used items that are in good shape that maybe would otherwise go to our friends at the transfer station. And they clean them up, sell them. You can go get good buys to buy clothes or other items there. And so it helps less trash on our transfer station and gives people good deals. In fact, I have to share one I found today. As we were in store this morning, I saw this beautiful item and I thought we could replace our Bowden cup. So for those of you that aren't familiar, we have something we call the Bowden cup that the interns award at the end of the summer. The interns work with each department on various projects or get tours and they tell us what their favorite department is. Ed won it a couple of years ago. Plating won it this past year. Public Works has won it before. But rather than a little coffee mug that used to be mine years ago, we now have a new Bowden cup that was for $10 item that I even donated to town myself. It appears to be real silver plate and one of the select board members suggested the Bowden students need to polish it before we order something.
They took a chewing back of it.
And this was once Lawrence and Loretta Hares' 25th wedding anniversary chalice. And June 25th, 1974 was either their wedding date or the 25th anniversary of it. I'm not sure. But this is our new Bowden cup and thank you, Goodwill.
That's awesome.
If you don't want to remember your wedding.
We know it's not an urn.
We don't believe it's an urn or if it was, the ashes would be dumped.
Mark, can I ask a question about the first item that you talked about, the panels? Can you tell, describe to me what those are? I have no idea.
So like on Elm Street, you may have noticed just before the railroad trestle, there's actually also in the intersection Green Street, there's a square, say two by three color black. It's got historical information. So these are similar, but they're for the bridge. One of them shows some of the versions of the bridge over the years and the history of all the crossings of the river.
Now I'm on page. Thank you.
So a lot of interesting information.
Absolutely. All right. Boards committee reports. None tonight. Public comment. Anything online? No. Okay, thank you. Correspondence. Anyone have any correspondence?
Yes, I had a correspondence from someone opposed to the community center and I responded to them.
Very good. Thank you. Adjustments to the agenda. We are changing the executive session at the end. There's a different purpose of where we're going to address. Consent calendar. Approval of the minutes of the regular select board meeting held January 16th, 2025.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from January 16th, 2025 as presented.
All right, so moved. Have you have all been seconded?
Seconded.
Moved to second. It all in favor? Motion carries.
I abstained.
Excuse me?
He abstained.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
He wasn't here.
That's what happens when I'm reading the next line. Yeah, thank you.
I abstained.
Okay. All right, next up, public hearing. Twenty-five dash oh four. Consideration of any appropriate action on an application for a new liquor license for the Refro M E L L C. Okay. So we will call this meeting to order. We'll have the applicant present. At that point, the board will ask questions. Public can ask questions. And then once we're finished, we will then close out public hearing and the board will deliberate.
It's underneath here.
Oh, that'd be good. Yeah, perfect. All right. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Brian. I'm the owner of Refro. I'm right over on Main Street where the restore was. We've got axe-throwing, rage rooms, indoor furniture, and rage paint splatter rooms, and right now a mocktail bar. And we're looking to get the liquor license so that we can serve alcohol on site.
You said mock, not moth, right?
Right.
Hearing's not good, buddy. All right, next. What else?
What else do you need to know?
Just when are you expecting to start?
As soon as possible. We've been open for a little over a month serving non-alcoholic beverages. And then if it's approved tonight, we would submit everything to the state and however long it takes for them to refer it then.
Great.
Paul Botana Jones, where is he from?
He lives in New Hampshire.
Okay, because he says he's not from there.
Yeah. Yeah, he's actually, yeah, he's back in New Hampshire today. Yeah.
And?
I have no question.
No questions. Okay. All right, beer, wine, spirits, everything, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is this already vetted?
Yes, already have a list. We have to go to.
That already vetted. Listen, or we are. Yeah, that's all set. All right. No question.
Patty? I'm trying to find it out. Did you submit a drawing of a proposed area where liquor would be served? Is it different than other areas where people that aren't 21 years of age will be?
So it would be a Class A license, so we wouldn't have anyone under 21 in the building without someone else in the party who's over 21. I did submit all the drawings to the state that they requested.
Do, does that serve food as well or are you just drinks?
We have a limited menu, so it's, we've got like pizza and ice cream, stuff like that. Not, we don't have a whole kitchen.
All right, that's it. All right, we'll come right up. Any questions from the public? Okay, we're out of.
One more question. And I know this is going to sound really crazy, but alcohol license with axe-throwing, what do you do to protect when people shouldn't have any more alcohol and they're throwing axes?
So we do have limits. So it's one drink prior to any activity and then during any activities up to two an hour, up to five total. So that would be a drink counting as a beer. A cocktail would be two drinks.
Okay.
And then those limits are also set for us by the Department.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Probably for Mark. Is there any ordinance or law, whatever, regarding alcohol in your school?
I'll probably defer that to our police chief.
Might be on the canvas that can't go to your schools.
The state did ask for my crossing into the nearest school, so I submitted that to them.
It's a half a mile or six tenths of a mile?
Yeah, so, yeah. Pretty much right across the street. So they do it.
Tenth of a mile.
Yeah, from the front door to the front door of the school.
From the front door.
And they don't measure it in the boundary line of the property?
The online application said from front door. But it also was, it formatted weird trying to, trying to submit it. So I sent in a comment with that too.
Do we have limits in the town with liquor licenses?
How many we can have, you mean?
Yes. Like I'm thinking a market basket that was looking for liquor license for sale.
That was an agency liquor store that does have limits, but to my understanding, not let the chief jump in. There are no other limits in Tops.
No limits on liquor licenses, only on cannabis. Good.
An agency liquor store.
All right, anything else?
I don't have any other questions.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, we'll come out of the public meeting and I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Congratulations. Cheers.
All right. Next up. Nine, the whole business nine. On to new business. Twenty-five dash zero five. Consideration of any appropriate action to award the bid on cover replacement for Tedford Road. Director of Public Works.
Good evening. Dennis Thompson, Tops and Public Works Director. What I'm here tonight to ask for the select board to approve awarding the bid for the replacement of the two existing 36-inch culvers that are under the Tedford Road on the Autobahn Way end of the road. One of those two culvers has passed down. The other one's bottom is completely rotted out. They're needed being replaced. It's a project that's large enough. It's not something Public Works can do, the equipment. And also the area that's being excavated is of poor material. It'll have, pines will be driven into the area to help hold the banking while new materials brought in. They're calling it a light type of fill material before there are going to be approximately 80 foot long, 10 foot wide by six foot tall aluminum structured. We worked out the bid by Ray Pierce. Approximately five contractors were given an opportunity to bid on it to return their bids. You have the results there in front of you. Pratt &amp; Sons and Crookers. Pratt &amp; Sons were low bid. And just to help clarify a little bit where I added the cost for the water companies. The water district is going to piggyback our project at the time and have the same contractor install a water main through that area while the road is dug up. So we'll have to rethink the road again and it'll save money and overall it'll help the appearance of our road. Before you take up a road, the worst black cloud, so it's going to save that battle on bottom number, of course, as well. So we'll be putting in a new water main and the cross culvert in that area. Pratt &amp; Sons total bid will be for the town's payment will be $840,287.16. The water company will be paid for by the water company.
Will it be built separately to them from Pratt?
We haven't worked out that detail, but that's definitely a possibility, Ryan. Yes. In the past, projects like this, it's usually built like the town or to the town because we're going to take now the contract out of there and then they'll reimburse the town.
The purposes of the motion will probably, we'll use the 894 number in that way, knowing that we're going to be getting 54 back from the water district, but that's what we, the whole job is what's being done.
That's what we pay Pratt was the form out and we get reimbursed for.
And all this, if they get unforeseen circumstances, like if the water table is different than what they expect in things, unfortunately, this could end up going somewhat up from that in the end, but we don't know until we get in the ground. But at this point, the total cost is expected to be 894. 54 of them thinking of the water district. We do have a TIF for the Highlands that has about 114,000 in the reserve account that one of the allowable purposes for that TIF is for pedestrian and road improvements on Tedford Road. We've got, this project is going to add a sidewalk to the area of the culvert. So as we work on Tedford Road to add sidewalks, we won't have to go back and add it in this section. So that could be a source that we use some money from that rather than necessarily taking all of this just out of the straight capital. So there could be a couple of ways to come up with the 894, but we're looking for tonight authority to spend the 894.
I got a question. You were saying about a, I'm assuming the culvert, you said it was just the arch, right?
It's, it's, you might call it, Maria, be like a, an oval culvert with a bottom in it. And then the bottom will be filled with gravel to make it, what's required for us to have is a natural bottom culvert.
Then when it washes away?
Not if it's placed in there properly. It'll be placed in there with larger stone at the bottom, larger rip rap. And because it's fit into the stream bottom, it won't wash away. It won't wash away worse than the whole stream bottom would wash away. You know, kind of part of the screen, that's your department, probably the vision of my life and I'm the core of engineers.
Thank you.
As we go through this project, it's, you know, it's taken us a while and costs keep kind of increasing. This is just for the culvert replacement, right? Correct? Or is this including other scope work?
This will be, the work involved to put the road back whole once it, once the culvert's installed. It's the install and the repairs for the road.
Just that section, though?
That section, correct.
That's not including the paving of the road or the sidewalks?
Right. This is approximately 150 feet of road, either side of the actual utility.
Any other questions? Okay. Looking for a motion.
I make a motion to award the bid by Pratt &amp; Sons for the culvert replacement on Tedford Road in the amount of $894,550.
Sorry.
Moved to second. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, twenty-five zero six. Consideration of any appropriate action to allow the police department to partner with Maine Gay Warden's office on a multi-jurisdictional ATV enforcement education grant. Chief?
Good evening. I'm taking chief of police. So similar, similar to last year, the Maine Warden Service has reached out to us and asked if we wanted to partner with them for a ATV enforcement and education grant. Last year, the state broke it down into two grants, one in the spring and one in the fall. The only real difference is this year it's just going to be one that will run from March through to December. Last year, we asked for $7,000 total in the two grants. This year, we're just doing one grant for $8,000. Works pretty much the same. The Warden Service is going to write for and apply for the grant this year. They'll manage the grant and then we'll just set up details for opportunity officers to come in, work with a warden, and they'll conduct details. Last year, throughout our details that we did, we checked 61 ATVs and gave out several warnings, but we didn't actually issue any with some of this to anybody. And we also, in addition to the 61 during the grants, we had 16 other ATV compliance throughout town. But it's a good opportunity for us to partner with the wardens and last year we actually came into contact with the Tops and ATV group, I think a couple of times. And it's a good opportunity for us to not only partner again with the state, but also to meet with our local ATV operators. We're asking if we can go ahead and move forward with this state and apply for the grants again this year.
Any repeat offenders?
Last year, no.
Amazing. How that works.
But I heard.
Any questions? All right. Motion, please?
I make a motion to allow the town of Tops and Public Works Department to enter into a partnership with the Maine Warden Service to apply for a grant.
Multi-jurisdictional ATV enforcement education grant.
Yes.
Good teamwork.
Second.
Even better. All in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, twenty-five oh seven. Consideration of any appropriate action on the purchase storage trailer trailers and cans for the transfer station. Mr. Carrion?
Good evening. I'm Mr. Carrion. It's all great, Director. I'll deal with a couple of different people that we're buying from, but ultimately we're buying two 30-yard rectangular open-top containers such as you may see at the transfer station from metal and/or ammo debris. And we're asking for two 50-yard containers, which is what we pack in our trash containers, to replace these. These cans are all over 30 years old, so they're, they're getting pretty weak and repair is fairly expensive on some of them, not in real bad shape. So that plus the fact that we're going to be going into a contract in July where we're going to need to spares a little bit more accessible. This will help us to operate smoothly our older 50-yard containers to be moved over to our recycling containers because we don't care if those leave because it's all clean, big moving on. But the trash we want to ban inside those containers. And, but I didn't get the total, but we also have, we also have one of purchase for tractor trailers. They're the, that normally be on the road. Those are what we use for storage. We use those to store our cardboard to clean. Right now, those boxes again are quite old. The walls are getting pretty weak and stuff. They need to be repaired before we have any issues. Or not repaired, but used twice because they're, they're pretty well done. So we have.
Actually, they've got it.
They have a price list, so I don't know what the total cost was of all.
Fifty-three five.
Fifty-three five.
Yeah, well, I should make a motion.
Okay. So this is what we're asking for is the two 30-yard open-top containers from Agwire Equipment for around $12,300. And two 50-yard closed top metal containers from Atlantic Recycling Equipment for $24,000. As well as the four storage trailers from the main trailer for the sum of $17,200. And that's including the wheelers as well.
Are these the same quality as the old ones?
Yes, we, we, the thicknesses, I've got the specs. We really need to see if you may have any in the packet, but they're the same as what we have. If we wanted, we could have got rubber ones, but those were more obviously, I think we're buying.
Good. So I think we got our monies worth on the first group, so.
We've done well. They've, they've held up pretty well. We prepared a few here and there and, and I think we replaced the 150-yard a while, a few years ago. Yeah, they've done well. Some of those others are looking pretty funky.
But do you propose we do with the, the ones that are no longer being used?
Well, some of them are, are just going to be scrap, so we'll sell them as, you know, we're going to haul it off as scrap and scrap the whole container. And then there's some that's proving to be them at all as spares for when you need to replace a 30-yarder, we're going to probably do a little bit of that. I've talked with Pintree Waste and, but what we get done with our contract with them, they've always been good about taking my cans and refurbishing them or repairing them. You know, I want to make sure we have good wheels on them for rolling because they roll and they help as well as, those will do that to our equipment. That's it.
That'd be great. Motion, please, from the board.
I think because we have three different companies, we'll just put this motion by company. Make a motion to approve the purchase of four storage trailers from the main trailer for the sum of $17,200. Two 30-yard open metal containers from Agwire Equipment Incorporated for $12,300. And for two 50-yard closed top metal containers from Atlantic Recycling Equipment LLC for $24,000.
Sorry.
Moved in second. It all in favor of the motion? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, twenty-five dash zero eight. Consideration of any appropriate action to authorize the chair to sign a proposed letter of support for LD 29.
Does she mean take it from here, sir?
Absolutely.
All right. So there is a letter included in our packet that gets a point across, but I have provided the letter to the rest of the board that I will now read. That I think we'll cross a number of Ts and dots and i's, clearly not all of them because we have some room, maybe we're going on a day now, but we'll get over this one first. So, letter reads as such. Your members of the petition committee of the Maine State Legislature have a topson participated in discussions with planning related to the proposed Mary Meade Trails in 2008 and set representatives on the Mary Meade Trail Board supervisors, systems, and management for the team. We believe the trail along this corridor is in spite of fully and in close collaboration with local municipalities to benefit our community. Tops and also participated in the Rail Corridor Use Advisory Council, or RUAC, process of the lower road in 2022 through 2023. The majority report from that process recommended that the Maine Transportation Commissioner work with the Mary Meade Trail Board Supervisors and individual towns to identify potential trail segments where limited motorized use may be permitted, such as where there is space for dual trails. And we also promoted a full multi-use of one trail as well as a board, not the RUAC, this board. We do not agree with the majority report's assertion that the trail should be for non-motorized use only. Your committee is currently considering LD 29, which would require the Department of Transportation to implement the recommendation for the lower road rail use advisory council. Town Tops and is supporter of this effort. However, we want to be clear that it is very important to our community that the opportunity for motorized and other types of trail use be included in any trail planning with Maine DOT. That all trail users, all trail users are able to utilize a segment of the lower road located in Tops and. If Maine is to abandon its critical public transportation infrastructure, then as many taxpayers as possible should benefit from the new use, not just a small segment of the population. We want to be certain that the RUAC's recommendation regarding motorized access is honored in this process. Thank you for your consideration. Signature. That's what it says.
Yes, that's it.
So this, I think, is a little more, what I'm looking for here. It's what the legislature is more accustomed to seeing. I think it covers all the bases. And I'm happy with how this has turned out. So I guess if people have thoughts, concerns, suggestions. Yeah. I haven't answered any questions.
I had no questions about the letter. I think it's written very appropriately and balanced and.
We received a different letter also. Trying to connect the dots. So we had some letter initially submitted that was asked for us to approve.
And that was just the source of Matt and I working together.
Right. So after we received that, we wanted to make sure that the board would actually approve something and we needed to edit it. And this is the edits from that original letter that was created.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
All right.
I, I just want to bring up another topic and that is the Energy Committee is sending a letter. And I'm not sure if they have been charged to handle LD 29, if that's outside of the scope of their charge. That they were charged to do the Tops and Climate Action Plan. And in their letter, which I obtained from Sky, said that there was overwhelming support for this regional trail system and they're actually requesting that it only be bikes and pedestrians. And so I think someone needs to talk to the, they are not representing the town and they're sending a letter out as if they're representing the town. So I'm not sure what we want to do with that. Comments, thoughts?
Well, I mean, it wasn't the original charger. It was a climate action plan and I don't see how this really fits with that, but that's my opinion.
Well, I just think that when they're saying there's overwhelming support for this regional trail system, but the overwhelming support is not documented. I don't know.
There's no source listed, so.
So I just have concerns that they're writing a letter on behalf of, on behalf of the Energy Committee, they're writing it, but that represents us in the town. And I just, I'm not sure. There's nobody here from the Energy Committee for us to talk to.
Which is odd because they were here right before us.
Yeah.
One of the concerns I would bring up, and that's a, is a great point, and I was at the Energy Committee meeting earlier today and listened to them read this. One of my thoughts on this is what, what does it look like when this committee gets two letters from two different pieces of Tops and and start?
different pieces of Topson and start contrast to each other? I think that does not send a good message for Topson, I think we need to have a unified letter that's approved by the select board to move forward with. Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, um, the six people on this letter have every right to write a joint letter just like this, um, and submit it, or go to the legislative working session or a public hearing and then work session and speak your mind. Um, but they weren't elected, we were. And this is the message that we're getting across from our perspective, when we're looking at the entire town and all of its residents and not just a small group. I'm in favor of what you have for edits, I think the edits were very well written, and I think it, it captures the history throughout the process so that everybody's aware. Um, I'm just wondering how to support that piece of documentation while also recommending to the energy committee that they can write their letter, but they took maybe not have Topson as part of the listing on that? Or? Or the term?
Well, they're, they're certainly free to write a letter of support as residents of Topson, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate for them to be representing the town as the energy committee writing the letter.
Mark, you have any nuances here?
I mean, my understanding of the charge they got in early December was to write the climate action plan. If part of their charge had been to review pending legislation and give opinions on it, then as long as they're clear it's the opinion of the energy committee, and I'm not saying it's the opinion of the whole town or something, then I think that would be permissible. I think you would be within, um, what you designate as their charge to tell me, uh, to tell the planning director that we're not going to send, submit that letter because that is not something they've been asked to write on behalf of the town. So they could certainly, as everyone said, give their own opinions and say, put their own names, but, um, the Topson Energy Committee is an ad hoc committee, it's given for specific, specific purpose. And if this letter is not the purpose that you believe was their charge with, then you're within your rights to say, do not send this on behalf of the town.
I wasn't here when the energy committee was initially created, but when it was created, was it created by the town seeking people out to join the committee, or was it a group of people that came to the town seeking to have the committee created?
It was the letter.
So in the letter that the committee wrote, it says, in light of the severe ongoing and worsening effects of climate change, the Topson Select Board created the energy committee. I don't know if that's a.
There just may be some things in here that aren't accurate.
The energy committee was stood up as, from a group called the Topson Solar Advocates, and their prime purpose was to, um, promote solar, uh, development in the town, that's what that group was for. Um, I remember early on, uh, before I got elected. Uh, and eventually, when they were created, the, one of the first things they did was, uh, get us some pretty decent cost savings, um, through our community solar contract. And so this whole, the, the group was stood up to advance solar energy. Um, and there have been a couple of changes over the years in terms of what we've included in their charge, that Mark would be too there. Um, but it was already an existing group, it wasn't like we were, we're, we're going to create a committee and hopefully people will volunteer for it. I, and I, you know, I will say this too, I think the energy committee has done great work in the past, they've done a lot of fantastic things for the town to help save money without spending money, and I think that's to be noted. My big quarrel is just as a committee that we oversee to have a contradicting message from what we're also trying to put out, I just don't think that looks good, I don't know what the resolution for that is, I'm just saying that I don't think it looks good.
The letter says specifically to use non-motorized forms, which is complete opposition to what we want.
It's a contradiction to what we're, we're proposing that we allow. Not just that, it's a contradiction to the majority report of the RUAC as well, yeah, so, I mean, you've got two directs right there already.
So how does that work?
I just want to make sure whatever they're saying is accurate and true.
I wish we had them here that we could discuss this with them, but is this something that we can, uh, relay a message to them saying that they're welcome to write as residents, but not to represent the energy committee? Or not to represent the town?
That would be my preferred solution, but I don't know if that's.
Can we do that?
You know, it's a nice, you know, great, put on better agenda.
Can we seek to be a, an approval before they send the letter out? Or can they? I'm only, I don't know.
There's nothing in an ordinance that says that. Probably what I would suggest is you go back to them or remain and ask them to come to your next meeting to address
They're here to present.
how they feel this is within their charge, um, and talk about, say, you're concerned about the inconsistencies. And then depending on their answers, you can take it from there. Um, but it may be a reason, next time they come to you for a charge, to either not give them one, uh, or to be real specific, they need to stay within it.
I just don't know how soon this is going out, it could go out this week, but I, again, it's a matter of the, the statements in here as a representation that I don't see as completely accurate, but I wasn't here fully on from the very beginning. I would just like to make sure that whatever they send is an accurate statement and has accurate information in it.
I mean.
And doesn't contradict us.
They're going to be asking for staff to send this out, I'm sure that the planning director hasn't done it tonight. So if you direct me to not to send it out and to ask them to come to the next meeting instead to discuss this first, I can certainly.
Yeah, they're going to be here anyway presenting on the climate.
Is that next, is that the next meeting?
Next meeting, March fifth. When's the, I don't recall the hearing for this bill?
I think maybe March fourth.
Okay. Well, that's a sticky word, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not sure what, what action to take, um. Yeah, I think the, the appropriate action is for someone to contact, um, this committee tomorrow, um, during business hours and tell them we have a contract with our letter and their letter, and ask them to come to the next meeting soon, or they're coming anyway, as you said.
It'll be over.
Don't say it, no.
So. You won't be able to protest in my, at the work session. It'll be, it'll be passed, so it's going to be done before the next meeting.
So you could call them and say, you know, it's the, uh, opinion of the board that we don't want Topson referenced in this letter, or in a way that sounds like we're, we're supporting it. But it's been authorized by the select board, it's no more.
It's just the terminology saying is overwhelming support for what, you know, they're using terminology that's, that's leaning toward their desires and their wants, but not necessarily.
Overwhelming support of six people in the room.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I can't say that.
Also, the same thing goes for the statement of the select board creating the energy committee, we didn't create the energy committee, they came to us and asked to be created. So, from what I gather from the history of. I know that's very nitpicky, but at the same time, in a, in a place of full transparency, we want to make sure that what we're stating is accurate, because if that letter goes to the general public and, you know, as public information, we have to be able to submit everything. I don't want the contradictions to come back on us and then have to explain ourselves why that letter went out while we sent something different.
And it's almost irrelevant what was done when the committee was set up four years ago. Their most recent charge that you gave them in December was to write a climate action plan.
So they've already stepped outside, so even when they say non-motorized forms, does that include like bicycles that have motors, nowadays there's a lot of those out there too, and so it's just, it's just not very specific. I want to go with, um, the letter that Matt drafted, I think that that's a good one, we can vote on that tonight, it's on the agenda. Because it has to go out before our next meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
So. Do you want to move on to the next one? Is it, any other discussion? Sorry.
Seems kind of weird for me to do.
Okay.
I'll make a question. I, I move to accept the changes that were created from select board member Dixon and town manager Mark Waltz uh, for approval to send to the state of Maine transportation committee. For LD twenty nine, second.
Moved in second, I don't care. Motion carries.
Okay. Do you want to direct me any further than that?
I don't know if we I, I, I don't know, I, I don't have an answer personally, I don't know what to do on that situation because they could send it out and they could name that, um. I, I know that by overreaching and overstepping, it puts a little bit of a bad taste in my mouth, and that might not load well overall, but, um, I'm not sure we can tell them that they can't send a letter or not, I just don't know if that's true, but just.
Well, if we send a letter, they just can't represent the town as the energy committee, they can send it out. They're using their membership in the, their appointment into this committee as power to back their letter, in my opinion. And I'm not sure that that's something they should be doing. They weren't charged to be involved with the, the trail specifically.
I think at least tell them the board's not fully supportive of some of the language in the letter.
And some of the language appears to be inaccurate.
They wanted to submit individual letters, that's their.
They can do individuals, they can even do it as a group, but just not from the energy committee.
I was trying to think of an example similar to this situation, and the first thing that came to mind was when a committee in the legislature votes something out, either on the pass or on top of pass, and then the legislature does the opposite, which doesn't have a whole lot, but it does happen. But the nuance there is that those are all like provisional. A whole.
Example.
Sort of different than this situation, where we have a committee of appointed people.
And there have been other times for other issues, where like, say, the conservation committee, or maybe CPIC has taken a position. They've been clear that it's the committee's position. I think the difference from this one is those are within their charge. This one is clearly not within what they were asked to do. And this is, and this is not a standing committee, this is an ad hoc committee. The standing conservation committee has broader.
It, it, it really is a bummer because the way I see it, it's such a benefit to have an energy committee, but not at the point where it oversteps the boundaries and pushes too far, because that doesn't vote competence in the committee itself, if that's going to be the case for the future. But we do need one, we just don't need them to overstep.
Well, best given the recency of the mandates that we gave them. And no one's going to forget it, forget about it between that period now, so please hope not.
So you're clear on what you're going to do?
So I think what I heard is to go back to the committee, express the select board's dissatisfaction, that they're taking a position that it's going to appear that Topson is in conflict. Um, that their charge was to write a climate action plan. Um, certainly if they want to, as individual members, write something, and in fact, we're not telling the council letter about the committee, but they do so at their peril the next time they come for a charge, because they'll have shown that they're not necessarily following their charge.
Fair enough. Yeah, I don't think we're really predict to rhythm.
No.
And there's, there's far too much censorship going on in this country right now, so I'm happy that they are able to do this, but again, this is overriding the will of the people who put us in the new seats. Um, and we're here for a reason, so I think it does support them.
All right, good. All right, next item, twenty five dash over nine. Consideration of any appropriate action to authorize the town manager to enter into an amendment of the contract with Duncan Associates in the amount of up to twenty six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars.
So when we originally contracted years ago with Duncan Associates to do the recode, it was about a hundred thousand dollar contract. Um, and it was for an initial draft, public process, second draft, um, and then to take it to the town meeting. What's happened, the second draft came out in April, it became, as people got more and more engaged with it, which I guess is the good news, is people were getting more and more engaged with it. Um, it became apparent that there were more and more things that there were not yet agreement and the, um, compromise and happiness on. Uh, and that a third draft would be needed, so CPIC has spent a lot of time taking in comments, sitting down with developers, citizens, um, they did a long spreadsheet responding to each and every comment. Everything is now, their comments have been given back to the consultants in the hopes that we can get a third draft prepared and then get that out, um, and hopefully the third draft will be the charm, um, so that this doesn't go on forever. Um, but, you know, in the defense of, say, the process, CPIC, their consultants, they've unfortunately had to go through either four or five planning directors. Um, a lot of staff changes throughout the process would certainly makes it harder to get a cohesive code and happy with them. Um, they've given us a price for what we think is going to take it through to the end, that's this additional twenty six nine eighty. Um, we did have money set aside in the planning budget for consultant work, um, this we come out of, so this isn't, um, money that we don't have, it's, it's in the budget. So we're, seek your authorization to enter into the contract for twenty six nine eighty or up to twenty six nine eighty, till we finish out the recode process.
What was originally your mark for?
The.
Contract model, or just Derek?
It was intentionally carryover for this purpose.
Yeah.
And it's actually money from one of the TIFs that you can use for economic development, is how originally Derek complained for the budget, so we knew it was going to run over, and so we had some money sitting there, or playing for it.
That's good, any questions? Okay. Motion please.
I move that we allow Mark to, uh, use the.
There's actually a written one here.
I move to authorize the town manager, Mark, to enter into an amendment of the contract with Duncan Associates in the amount of up to twenty six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars to work on a recode private grant.
Second, moved in second, in all favor of the motion. Unanimous. Twenty five dash one zero or ten, it's something to call it. Consideration of any appropriate action to authorize the treasurer to convey the real property located at thirty eight Schellenberger Jean Barber Road to the former owner Pamela Reynolds upon payment of all taxes, interest, and expenses.
So this is our final significant property of the last tax foreclosure season. Um, there's an attorney from Pine Tree Legal, it's working with the owners to, there's a grant they can apply for to get all, they believe, to get all caught up, but they need to know the number, um, and the authority to do it. The below figures would include all outstanding taxes, interest, mail fees. Um, in addition, once we own a property, we have, it's an occupied one, we have to put, add it to our insurance policy. Um, just for our liability, it's not like they're so if it burns down, it doesn't protect us or them, but if someone slips there and we get sued, it protects us. Uh, so this would also includes the reimbursement for that. Um, so I haven't put the actual number in the motion, because the day it happens will be the day we do the interest through, and they don't know when main housing authority is going to approve the grant, they hope. Um, but we're looking for the permission to basically give the property back to the former owner and return for payment of all outstanding taxes, interest, and insurance.
It's always in our best interest to give the property back and that they resolve this, so I think it's excellent, and it's always a good deal to give property back to the owner.
I totally agree.
Yes. Any, anything we have?
Movement of action.
Long game. Here we go.
I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to convey the real property located at thirty eight Schellen Barber Road to the former owner Pamela Reynolds upon payment of all taxes, interest, and expenses.
Second.
Moved in second, in all favor. Motion's in it, Derek, excuse me. All right, uh, twenty five eleven, consideration of any appropriate action to discuss member attendance at committee and board meetings.
Uh, yes. This is an item that I requested to bring up because when I first became a select board member, attendance was something that was discussed, um, it was brought up by Derek, the town manager at the time, about how attendance at these meetings were important. Um, I've recently gone through and as an active participant of all of the committee meetings and the board, uh, planning board and other board meetings, uh, I noticed an uptick in absenteeism amongst committee and board members. And for an instant, there's a couple of members on our planning board that have missed over fifty percent of the planning board meetings. I, for one, just find it unacceptable to be nominated into a position that carries enough weight to make big decisions that affect people in this town and not show up. So I wanted to bring up to all of you the idea of maybe creating or have Mark come up with some stuff for an attendance policy, and that would require an attendance policy, whether it's excused or unexcused, I think right now we have something with an unexcused absence. But to measure excused absences, I find prudent for us to do, what I don't know is where do we feel, if, if, if this is something that you would support, where do we feel that, that number lies and how many things can we miss? Um, is it ten percent, twenty percent as a percentage, or is it a number of meetings? Those are the things that I wanted to really talk about this evening, um, in hopes that we can come to a, a, um, a realization that attendance matters, uh, at committee meetings, because a lot of the committees that are. Because a lot of the committees that are doing great work right now, uh, if, if members aren't showing up, then it gets pushed on to the, uh, employees of the town. And, um, as someone nominated into that position, I do feel that they're accepting a responsibility to do the work of that as a volunteer, as someone that wants to be engaged in the town of Topsom. And that work is important. And I, now that we're getting a lot of, uh, people interested in joining the committees, we have mostly fully staffed committees and boards. And I think that we just need to have that conversation. And I, I'm curious to know what your guys' thoughts are and how important attendance is for the sake of the town.
Some committees meet, uh, once a month, some committees meet twice a month. So I'm not sure a number is good. Maybe a percentage would be better, say twenty percent. If you miss in excess of twenty percent, then it would be assumed that you are going to step down from the committee. I mean, we'd have to communicate this. And then I'd also like to add another component to that and to say, um, an individual resident should have a maximum number of committees they can serve on, like two.
Simultaneous meeting. Simultaneous meeting.
And simultaneously, right, right. So that they're fully invested in the committee that they're serving on. I don't think we have anyone right now that serves on more than two committees. And so, you know, it would just be a good time to put it in so that someone's not going to be on five committees or six committees and, and have, you know, exceptional influence that way. What do you, I don't know. I just don't know that.
I think there should be a hard cap on the excused as well. Because, you know, you don't want the situation where people are cherry picking, which means they don't attend based on the agenda. So it needs to be.
And then if the chair says they're excused, they're excused, they're excused, they're excused.
Well, I would like to echo that sentiment in a, in a maybe more depth. Because in a time where transparency is so critical and when we receive emails or, or, uh, communications where people feel that conflicts of interest may be happening or collusion may be happening, or whatever they want to perceive to happen. Um, it could be perceived that you only go to the meetings that benefit you. And that could be a problem for town perception. And I, and I'm trying to avoid that kind of perception in hopes that people are doing the work for the right reasons. And that people don't have an opportunity to give that perception because we're as transparent as we can be with the town. So that if they have questions, we can answer them with a straight face.
I, I think there needs to be maybe, uh, a buffer in there someplace for exceptions to the rule. Um, for example, I don't want to, I won't name names, but one of our committee members had a child who was very, very ill, um, for a long period of time with cancer treatments. And I think we need to make exceptions. I don't know. Do you think that person should step down temporarily or do you think it's okay to make an exception? Say anybody misses twenty percent, let's just use that as a random number. Every, anybody who's over twenty percent of missing their meetings could come before the select board and talk to us.
Plead their case.
Plead their case.
Please let me stay.
Yeah. And I just think that there are going to be exceptions that we want to be able to look around instead of having the hard cap.
Well, and there's ways to word that. So you can basically, instead of saying an absence, you, or an event, you can basically call it an occurrence. So basically from the date they stop coming in until the date they come back only counts as one absence. If that's some, there's some type of emergency like that that prevents them from attending.
I mean, we're talking about meetings that happen typically once a month. If you're ill or someone else is ill, if that's happening for multiple months, you're distracted anyway, you probably shouldn't take care of what you need to take care of.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You put a cap on it for sure.
I think twenty percent plus the appeal ability. That works for me.
So twenty percent is two point four meetings.
It's going to affect us too, because I mean, I think all boards and committees need to be a part of it, not that we see an issue with that because we're usually typically here. But we get twenty-four meetings a year unless any are canceled. That's twenty percent of.
I, I'd like to raise that to twenty-five percent. And the reason is it's two point four meetings a year. It's only twelve. So they only have to miss two meetings and they're done.
Yeah.
So if you do twenty-five percent, they have to miss three meetings out of twelve.
Or six out of twenty-four.
Mm-hmm. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
To bump it up to the twenty-five?
Mathematically, that makes sense.
And we revisit it next year if we have to.
It's a little different when it's, you know, twenty-four meetings a year, but for the ones that are twelve meetings a year. And then if, you know, the meeting is canceled, that would change the statistics.
You know, and, and part of the other reason that I was bringing this up is if you're accepting a nomination to a board or a committee, you're accepting the position of going to those to work. You know exactly when those meetings are going to be well in advance. I can tell you when the select board meeting is going to be in June of twenty twenty-nine, because it's always the same.
When's it going to be?
Let me pull up my calendar, but you know, it's like, you, you know when it's going to be.
I'd be impressed if you could spit that out right now.
Uh, yeah, I don't think I could. Um, but I, I do feel that we know that these meetings are going to be there in, in a lot of time in advance. So to schedule around those things is not hard to do unless you're going on vacation, which is understandable. Or, you know, sometimes there's an emergency or things happen. And that's why I think we allow a certain amount of, uh, absenteeism. But if it's fifty percent or sixty percent, I personally just, I think that's too much. I think it, it, something needs to be done to curb that.
The seventh and the twenty-first.
Well, one thing that I don't think we can do as a board is kick another board member off without a charter. I remember this.
You think about us at the select board?
Yeah, you just mentioned the select board.
I'm thinking planning board.
Oh, planning board, okay. All right, yeah. Cause that would be, I'm a huge fan of, but everything you're saying and even applying it to us, but I don't believe we can have the power to do that for us.
We're elected.
Yeah.
Right.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
So at least everybody, we can hold it to ourselves to know that we're going to all abide by it and at the same.
You can plead your case too much.
You can plead your case. Uh, but moreover, specific to planning board, the commissions, all of the committees that we have, um, the TDI, if that's something that we can oversee.
So TDI is a little different because TDI is a separate corporation with its own set of bylaws and things. And you are the only members. So if you wanted to put it in effect for TDI, we'd have to go about it a different way, which brings a point I want to make. Um, I'm, I'm hearing some talk about not wanting to have someone serving more than two committees. You actually probably don't need to do anything formal for that because you pick who's on the committees. So you could, if you know someone's already on two committees, you can just choose not to put them on a third.
It would just be, it would just be good for, um, like Rose to not schedule those meetings if, if someone can look up that information before they schedule.
So, so that I don't think we need an ordinance or a policy. Um, for the twenty, I, I think, uh, select board member Nixon's right that for the, your board, it would have to have a charter to do something. Everything else is a mixture of excluding TDI, um, ad hoc or standing committees, some of which have some language already on attendance, some which don't. I think what I should do is go back to our town attorney and get direction from him. It might be what we need to do is, which there's still time to do, but propose an ordinance at town meeting that gets passed. That says, these are the standards for attendance. Um, it might be something that needs more than just a policy. Uh, so what I can do is check with the town attorney and see what he recommends on that, if, if that's your pleasure.
Well, I think to your point, sorry, um, just ripping off what Mark just said though. Uh, when I first started volunteering with the town for the conservation commission, I was on conservation, uh, historic district and, uh, conference and plan update. So them three. Um, I was absolutely trying to maniacally and evilly subvert the will of people and take over town, uh, by being on that many, that many committees. But at the time, we didn't have a lot of people who were volunteering for the things.
Right.
We could get back to that point again in the future. Um, so I think to sort of kneecap ourselves right now, just because we have, um, a welcome of volunteers, which is fantastic. But when we first started in select board, we used to complain all the time about people who not wanted to volunteer. We'd have to recycle through similar people, um, or the same person going for, for each committee. And I think at that point, we want at least a committee to function, I guess. Um, so I think Mark's suggestion about being our own watchdog, at least at this point, for captain, the number of committees we can be at, I think that's probably more appropriate, you know, I totally get what you're saying. Um, but at the same time, we might find ourselves in another situation ten years down the road where, you know, society's collapsed and, uh, you don't have anybody who wants to sit on a committee.
No, I agree. I just know that, you know, I just didn't want people, just an application to come through and have the interview scheduled.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When at this point, we don't want to do that, we can just, you know, not interview that person and say, they're already on two committees.
Well, we can modify the application a little bit too.
Are you, well, it already said.
Any rules, you know. But, but I think you can accomplish what you want, just telling me, hey, Mark, at least at this point in time, um, please don't schedule any for interviews authority on two committees. But then to take Matt's point, if you change your mind because we're desperate for committee members a year from now, you don't have to go to town meeting, get an ordinance change to accomplish it.
Correct. Well, I think I can agree with that.
So compromise.
So no, so no.
I also had to go towards Eric. Someone else does that.
So, um, you're going to talk to the attorney. There's nothing for us, no action tonight, which we discussed.
So what I would do is talk with the town attorney, say that the select board's interested in implementing either a policy or ordinance, whatever he recommends, um, that a committee member, if they miss more than twenty-five percent of meetings in a year, either excused or unexcused, um, then they remove the committee, but there is kind of an appeal right that can go to the select board and plead their case.
Great.
Um, if he says that can just be done with a policy, then we'll come back to you with a suggested policy. He says it has to be an ordinance, we'll come back to you with a suggested ordinance. And as I said, we still get time to pull it off that it could be added to the town meeting warrant for this year.
That sounds like a plan.
I think you would have to.
Do you need to say fiscal year versus calendar year?
Um, whatever you would like.
Probably the town fiscal year. Okay.
Active immediately.
Well, yeah.
When I said about changing the application.
That dated two years ago.
The town encourages people to, to limit their attendance to, yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
I think the greatest thing that brings in the people that currently that we're seeing an uptick of is we're holding workshops. And that brings people out, then get them interested. And we saw one tonight that, you know, was interested because she went to a workshop. So I think, I think when the committees are active and doing a good job, there's a level of interest to serve on them.
So that brings up one other thing to have you give me some direction on. Our committee that probably most recent, most frequently has workshop is CPIC. CPIC puts out to its members, they expect you to come to the meetings, but that the workshops are optional. Um, do you want to allow the committees to decide which meetings are optional? Or do you want to say if the committee's meeting, you want them at every twenty-five percent?
I think regular meetings are, uh, that you should attend the regular meetings at workshop or presentations are being done. I guess my opinion initially at least on my mind, you can change my mind on this, would be that if you have a certain person or two people that are presenting, they should attend. Um, and maybe not everybody has to attend those workshops. Uh, my mind would be easily shifted.
I think the reason for it, um, with CPIC at least, is CPIC is a really hardworking committee, you know, and lots of praise to Susan Ray Reeves, because she, she probably in some days should be the town staff member for the work she puts in. Um, so I think her thought is the workshops are often earlier in the afternoon when there's committee members that are valuable committee members, but they have to be at work or something.
Right.
Right.
So she, the people that are willing to do some heavy lifting in between meetings to help work on stuff, she asks, you know, she oversees it to everyone, but she likes to recruit them. Um, so I, I think it would be nice to leave that decision to the committee chair of which meetings are the mandatory ones for that reason. Um, because of the fact that if we insisted every CPIC member be at that, those workshops, they couldn't be because they were working.
I think that if you, I, I think that's going to defeat the purpose if you say they get to choose which meetings. You could be more specific and say, you know, workshops are optional. Or workshops are not included.
You can choose to.
Because then you say they choose the meetings. Well, the chair could say, okay, well, every other meeting you have to be here. And that changes the rule. We don't want to give them that.
It's only optional every other week.
Well, and you get people in shock, don't show up because they don't want to vote on certain items too.
No.
Well, and, you know, this is part of why the attendance is important to me. Sometimes it's a tough job.
So if I hear right, we're going to, this, the tenants policy, we're going to limit to the actual meetings, not workshops. Is that whatever?
Regular meetings.
Okay.
Great.
Regular meetings. Like energy.
What if they have a special meeting, like the community center, because they're getting ready to do something and, and they have an additional meeting that they scheduled?
Well, it's an official meeting then, right?
That would be a regular meeting.
So official meetings rather than.
Well, I guess we just, yeah, have the attorney think about what language she used to encompass all types of regular meetings where work is getting done and not presenting anything or, or taking in public feedback.
Frankly, town meeting is, you know, that's, that's one that everyone's, you know, basically it's, it's a, not a regular meeting, but it's a special meeting for sure. So.
Well, right. Let's just make it mandatory for all committee members to attend town meeting.
We'll double it.
It's fine.
If we did it in the background again, I'd say we'd have a much better show. That was an amazing time.
It was.
Oh, I saw, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Except for the sun. The blinding sun.
At this time.
So we're taking no action on this tonight.
No access, Mike.
Yeah, just, and I don't think you have to take a motion for it. Just revert it to us to do some research and.
All right.
That's what we have Jeff for.
Jeff, we have sidebar.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, on to business. Twenty-five twelve, consideration and any appropriate action on the appointment of Stephanie Gardner to the Topsom Energy Committee.
I move that we appoint Stephanie Gardner to the Topsom Energy Committee.
Second.
Consecutive, all in favor.
All right, you want to vote?
No.
Didn't seem too controversial. All right, twenty-five thirteen, consideration and any appropriate action on the appointment of John Hodge to the Topsom Housing Authority Board.
I make a motion to appoint John Hodge to the Topsom Housing Authority Board.
Second.
I do have discussion. Um, he has a meeting next Tuesday and he is officially resigning as executive director in order to take this position. And we'll follow up with the minutes to ensure that that happens.
Just the executive director of Topsom.
Correct.
To know.
Seems good. All right, all in favor of the motion? Motion carries? All right, now I'm going to move into executive session. Item twenty-five fourteen, enter into executive session. Section one MS, MRSA, section six, C, to discuss acquisition of real property.
Um, is that section four oh five sixty?
It's being, it's being changed.
Oh, it's changed?
Yeah.
What is the set, what is it now?
Uh, acquisition of real property.
And so it needs a second.
Second.
All in favor? You're in executive session.
Give us a minute to turn the mics up.